Okay. Get started hearing, get you guys back home to do what you want to do. Thanks for, for coming. Uh, we need to do the invocation and pledge first, so we have Nathan Jackson from Vision Church joining us. If everyone would please rise.
Father, we thank you so much for our city. We thank you for our city leaders, uh, first responders, everybody that serves this community in any way, God. I thank you for all these kids and their families represented here tonight, God. We thank you for the swim team and what it does and what it means. Pray that you bless these families. Uh, God, we ask that you bless this council meeting. Uh, give our leaders a wisdom and how to lead things and handle things as they always, uh, do a great job and God continue to bless our city and protect it in every way. And as the students are starting school, we pray that you bless them this year as well. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please may I see any good pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united in the heavens and on earth.
Uh, approval of minutes, regular meeting, uh, July 28th, 2025. We entertain a motion in a second if there are no questions or concerns.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. We have no treasurer's report tonight. Uh, approval of bills to be paid. Same thing here. If there are no questions or concerns, we'll entertain a motion in a second to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, on down to proclamations, and this is the fun stuff that we get to do up here, and especially this one's got a little extra meeting to, several members up here. Um, going to be recognized the Ducoy Swimming Indians, uh, for their victory in the 2025 Southern Illinois Swim League Championship, uh, at the end of July. So I'm gonna read the proclamation. I'll come out and we'll get everybody up, uh, try and get in one picture. Be a good challenge for Pete. Uh, a little bit harder than his usual few people in the photo. So, uh, here goes. Uh, whereas the Ducoy Swimming Indians composed of talented swimmers ranging in age from four to eighteen years old have demonstrated outstanding athleticism, teamwork and dedication throughout the 2025 summer swim season. And whereas under the exceptional leadership of head coach Ike Minton, the team displayed discipline, perseverance and sportsmanship in every meet. And whereas Ducoy Swimming Indians have proudly brought home the Southern Illinois Swim League Championship title for the first time since 2017, marking a significant and historic achievement for the team and the entire Ducoy community. And whereas their hard work and determination are a reflection of the values held dear by our city, commitment to excellence, pride in our youth and a spirit of unity. And whereas the success of the Ducoy Swimming Indians has inspired swimmers of all ages and contributed to a sense of community pride and celebration. Now therefore I, Josh Downs, Mayor of the City of Ducoy, do hereby proclaim August 12th, 2025 is Ducoy Swimming Indians Day in the City of Ducoy and urge all citizens to recognize and celebrate the remarkable accomplishments of our hometown champions. In witness whereof, whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Ducoy to be affixed to this 11th day of August, 2025. Uh, proclaiming the 11th day of August, 2025. So congratulations to you guys again, all the parents, coaches, all the volunteers. Uh, you know, you speak for, uh, for the whole city. It was, you know, a great season and, uh, loved watching you guys do what you did and, uh, the commitment to, uh, to swim. So, I'm gonna come out and we'll get a group picture, okay? Don't everybody cheer at once. All right, you tell us where you are. Everybody come up here. All right, little ones in the front, sit down on the floor. Indian style, face that way.
Oh, I see.
He's gonna have to get up front. Go to the end.
Everybody here. See all of them. Everyone, this way, please. Smile the first time so we can. If you can see me, if you can, some seconds. All right, ready? Tell them four, tell them three, two, one. Three, two, one. And one more for me. Three, two, one.
Right, hey, say it. Anybody, parents, need to get up.
I got you.
Faden, you're way too far behind.
So, got another one.
Got another picture there. Your excuse. Precess.
Hey, thanks. That's the fun stuff there.
Exactly, exactly.
Good turnout. I gave.
You guys, they didn't have our little bear stuff, if they didn't have that.
Yeah, yeah. What do we got?
There are lanyards, but they're like wrist lanyards, so they're shorter, like you can hook to your phone with these.
Oh, really?
They look nice a lot, and so we'll see when they come.
We did part of those down there, uh, personally written for us.
Back to normal program.
Yep.
Okay. I think we can move on. We have, uh, no guests tonight. Uh, first up on appointments is a motion and vote to accept the resignation of Mercedes Day as full-time telecommunications secretary, and she'll transition to part-time telecommunications. Um, would entertain with Mike not being here, uh, would entertain a motion and a second to accept that with regret. Mercedes done a great job for the last five or six years she's been here, so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And with that, motion and vote to appoint Bryson Witcher to full-time telecommunications secretary. He is, uh, currently a full-time telecommunications. This will be the secretary role that Mercedes, uh, just vacated.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And last motion vote to hire Rachel Reese as full-time telecommunications, starting August 14th, 2025. And this will of course replace the, uh, resignation Mercedes and Bryson, Bryson moving up. So we'll entertain a motion in a second to do so. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, on down to ordinances, resolutions. Resolution 2025 R0704, resolution authorizing non-hazardous waste disposal agreements with Perry Ridge Landfill. This is for construction, demolition and slush disposal, disposal. Uh, it's final approval. If there are no questions or concerns, we'll entertain a motion in a second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025 R0705, resolution authorizing redevelopment agreement with Dane Mason to expand business at 13 North Washington Street. This is also for final approval. There are no questions or concerns. Jeff, no changes here. All right, we'll entertain a motion in a second for final approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025 R0707, resolution authorizing redevelopment agreement to demolish, remove building debris, uh, and landfill, uh, the failed building structure located 115 East Main. Any questions or concerns from the council or any comments or issues from any? All right. We'll entertain a motion in a second to give final approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Uh, resolution 2025 R0801, resolution accepting proposed real estate sales contract and authorizing the execution of the real estate sales contract, uh, for the sale of real property, and this is for debate and public display. Uh, Ruth?
I'll take it.
Okay, go ahead.
This is for, um, land around Chester Construction Supply where they currently locate out in the industrial park. They're wanting to buy more land. They had it appraised. They are buying it for eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, closing should take place sometime around the end of August to the sometime early September.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from council? If not, we'll entertain a motion in a second to put on public display.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz and second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025 R0802, resolution authorizing public infrastructure improvements in the industrial park in support of the development of properties there. And this is also for debate and public display. And this is dealing with the, uh, sewer and the fire hydrants, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So two fire hydrants and a little over six hundred something foot of sewer main, Ruth?
Mm-hmm.
Be about $87,000, be handled by Blankenship from Murphy's Borough. And so this will be able to serve the, the Porter's Building that is, is gonna begin construction very soon, and then any future structures to the west or to the north on the fire hydrant, so. Would entertain a motion and a second to put on public display.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz, roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025 R0803, resolution authorizing issuance of parade permit to Ducoy High School Pep Club for their homecoming parade to take place on September 25th, 2025. This will be for final approval. Believe the map is in your packets and the routes the same as the last many years, so. Would entertain a motion and a second for final approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes, roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution authorizing, I'm sorry, resolution 2025 R0804, resolution authorizing agreement for engineering services with JT Blankenship for public infrastructure improvements at the industrial park, and this is for debate and public display. Again, goes back to the, what I just mentioned earlier, so this will be authorizing our contract with them. So would entertain a motion and a second to put that on public display.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes, roll call.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And last, resolution 2025 R0805, resolution authorizing entry into an agreement for lighting services for 2025 Holiday Lights Fair, dating back to before this council was sworn in, you know, every year that I've been here since or we've been here. Our city employees have had to install the Christmas light displays at the fairgrounds, and so, you know, that comes out of Commissioner Carnes' department and is a great strain on those guys, and that time of year is a really good time for them to pour concrete, get some last minute ditch work done, and get their stuff prepared for snow removal, and essentially takes them out of commission for about six to eight weeks. And so it's kind of been the goal of, of this council and, and that department and everybody involved to try and get somebody else to handle that installation, and up until now, nobody wanted to. Well, we were lucky enough to, to get two bids for that, one from Judge Services who's done the additional lighting the last two years, and McPherson Services who bid last year in that same project. The total amount, McPherson is about $150 or $175 cheaper to install all of our displays as well as the additional lights that we've had the last two years. The one catch there is there's a cap on their labor hours where an additional fee kicks in of $85 per man hour. And so I've spoken to everybody up here individually last week, and I think we were in agreement that we wanted to move forward with one where we knew the, the total amount, and there was no way that we were gonna get charged any extra, which would be Judge Services. Again, the, the total amount is, is about $150 cheaper, and the total, Ruth, was, what was the exact total, 52? Okay, $52,652.75. The bulk of that, of course, is installing the displays that we own, which is right at $36,000, which is basically a wash for Pete and the, and the people here listening. Last year, what tourism reimbursed us was right at $35,000, right, Ruth, for our labor, and so they reimbursed us in about February of this year for the 2024 Holiday Lights. So the money is a wash, we're not losing any money, and quite frankly, we're coming out ahead because, like I said, it gives our guys an additional two months to perform the duties that the taxpayers are paying them to perform. And that was one of the biggest complaints that we heard, and quite frankly, my answer to everybody was, well, if they don't do it, there's nobody to do it, because the volunteers have, have either passed away or aged out and are unable to do it. So that money will come back to us from tourism early next year, once they get their gate fees. So the $36,000 that we're paying for installation of our, the city and tourism-owned displays will again, will come back to us. So we're still, you know, the city's still out the same amount of money we were last year, which was a little over 16 and a half thousand for those additional lights. So just wanted to give some explanation and some context, and, and hopefully this is, works out good, and we can continue this for as, as long as this council's here. So with that, would, would entertain a motion to put that on debate and public display to enter into the contract with Judge Services for that previously stated amount of a little over $52,000.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, other business, I don't believe we have, any commissioners' comments?
Yes, I've got something, we've got, we've received numerous complaints about animal control in the City of Ducoy, something that's been ongoing for months now, and the county board discussed it a few weeks ago as well. I just wanted to kind of apprise the council what's going on, as well as the citizens of Ducoy. Every year, we would get a invoice from the county to pay a fee for animal control. It was never explained really what it was for, it was just an amount, it said, here, pay this amount. This past year, it was $8,137. Mayor Downs has been very cognizant of taxpayer funds and what we're using them for, and so the question was asked, well, what is this getting us? Anytime we use taxpayer funds, we want to know what the return on our investment is. We're very studious about spending any amount of money. So we got that email on January 13th from Commissioner, Commissioner Martin emails the mayor wanting the facility usage fee and paid immediately, and that's when the discussion began about, okay, well, what are we paying for, because we pay this flat fee, and then every time the county animal control comes to pick up an animal, we also have to pay a fee for that, so we're trying to figure out what our $8,000 was going towards. At that time, discussion began about intergovernmental agreement, and County Commissioner Martin stated that she would provide intergovernmental agreement, because that's what governments do when they work together to solve an issue. On March 26th, in the Ducoy Weekly, the county board promises this issue is being taken very seriously. It went all the way till June, we still didn't have a draft of an intergovernmental agreement, so now we're five or six months into this. June 3rd, we finally received for the first time a proposed intergovernmental agreement. It was forwarded to myself, between me and the mayor, we discussed possible changes to this very first draft. We returned it on June 11th to Commissioner Martin and asked for three substantive changes in what I would call three non-substantive changes, such as, when I say that, it spoke of the City of Pinneville being part of the agreement, City of Pinneville and Perry County, that's not us, so we asked them to change that, or the City of Ducoy. July 23rd, now we're six weeks later, the county board acknowledges that they were promising us an intergovernmental agreement and calls some of our issues laughable. Between myself and Mayor Downs, we didn't think conserving taxpayer funds was laughable, but that's the way it was described. August 11th today, two months after we returned a total of six requested changes, today, there's still been no response to that email from June 11th. In the interim, for the last seven, eight months, the county animal control has refused to take animals from Ducoy because we haven't paid this fee. All we're asking for is an intergovernmental agreement to know what we're paying for, because in the past, it was to pay this amount, and then we'll bill you every time we pick up an animal too. So we're still not to that part where we can sign an intergovernmental agreement, because we can't seem to get a timely response. We get calls about this, it seems weekly, I get a message from Ruth, hey, we got an animal, what do we do? It's very difficult to answer that question, and we can't seem to get the county board to work with us on signing an intergovernmental agreement. So that's where we stand, that's about as important as citizens know the timeline of what's been going on.
Have I got any questions for Kalen on that?
No.
Anything else, Kalen, or is that your only?
No, we'll just keep waiting for, hopefully to get this intergovernmental agreement completed, if we can get a response back from the county.
Yeah, and, you know, the only thing I would add to that is, you know, I received a call from the county board chairman, Bruce Morganstern, you know, essentially said, hey, it was his decision to shut us off, not Jennifer Martin's. I said, that's fine, I said, we're still waiting on a response to this email, and he said, what email are you talking about? And I said, well, the one I sent, and I said, let me pull up my email. So I told him when it was, and he said, well, I don't know anything about that. So I said, well, I'll forward it to you. And he said, my understanding was you were told, given a copy of the intergovernmental agreement, like Kalen said, early this year, he said, as early as January. I said, no, we received it June 3rd. And then he approached me at a, at nubability and just said, he wanted to apologize because what he was under, the understanding he was under was wrong, and I said, well, that's, that's fine, I appreciate that, but what is your response to our proposals? And he said, well, I don't have one for you yet. Haven't heard anything back from him. So again, you know, we're trying to, to communicate, you know, the other thing Jennifer said in her article was, she felt like I was trying to railroad her on the, the gas issue that I described in my email, and Pete, you can have these emails if you're interested. You know, I, I kind of felt the opposite in discussions with Kalen, you know, they were just telling us and telling Ruth, we'll just pay the bill and then we'll talk about it. I mean, that's pretty well the definition of getting railroaded, if you ask me, so. That's where we stand, you know, not really getting much out of them, and that's okay, I guess, but, you know, our citizens pay taxes to the county, and on top of this, another fee, and on top of this, another fee to the county, and so, just trying to protect our residents and, and their taxpayer dollars as best we can, and until then, we will sit and wait to hear from them. All right, Wade, anything?
No.
I agree. We gotta have a response out of them.
Yeah, yeah, even if you tell me no, that's.
Right. Give us a response, so we know where to go from there.
Yeah. Jill, you have anything?
Congrats, Ginn's Swim Team, and best luck to teachers and students starting school this week.
Yeah. Coach, anything else?
Good luck.
Ruth? Yeah, yeah, congratulations, Ginn's Swim Team, appreciate them being here, and what Jill said, the school starts on Wednesday, and hope for a good, safe year, and a lot of learning from all the students, and pray for our teachers and administration to learn how, or not learn how, but guide them and have a good school year. Other thing I want to address, there was a Facebook post within the last couple of weeks, addressing the push tax, and I don't usually respond a lot to things on Facebook, but I wanted to respond to this, the, the thing that bothered me, one of the things that bothered me the most was, this was that corner pocket, you know, I'm just gonna say where it was, they posted on their Facebook page, so it's all public. And I said, if you had any issues with the push tax, to call, you know, a phone number and ask for Ruth Hale. You know, and I told Ruth right away, I said, my problem with that is, you know, Ruth sends out what the council directs her to send out, and this council implemented this tax starting August 1st, based off an ordinance that was passed by the previous council in 2021. So people have known that this was a possibility, for going on four years now. We were told in March of this year that we could start collecting that because the court case was resolved, and, you know, this is a significant, looking to be a significant revenue stream for the city, that is, is of no expense to the bar owner, other than it's a little bit less money that, that they get, but they're still getting a big chunk of that revenue. And the video gaming terminal operators, which might be J&amp;J, or Excel, or, or what have you, are supposed to be the ones collecting that tax, and they have all of this information, and, and we've got this here in writing that, that we can share with Pete, all that information is in those machines, and, and generated in state reports. And so for anybody to say that they can't come up with that information is, is just telling you a lie. And I talked to one bar owner, I was in the restaurant last week on Tuesday or Wednesday, and this owner came up and asked me if I had any pushback, and I said, well, just from one, and, and he said, yeah, I saw the Facebook post, and he said, you know, our gaming company told us not to worry about it, they pulled the state reports and sent the checks directly to the city, and, and, you know, we don't have to do anything, no extra step for the owner of the, of the facility, so that's the way it should be run. So that's, that's the first thing. If you were going to, to that establishment and you're putting a penny in that drop box, that is not how this is supposed to work. So Corner Pocket can, you know, change their collection the way that they collect it, and the people there shouldn't have to be paying that directly. So again, my other problem was, you know, don't, don't put our city clerk's name on that, put my name on it, or the city council, whoever you want to put on it, because she does what we direct her to do, and, and not the other way around, so don't pick on her and try and make her be the bad person. The other thing with that was, you know, we use this money for road infrastructure improvements, and, and any sort of special projects that we have in the city, and running the city is very expensive these days, and the same business had no problem coming to us for about a $6,000 improvement for a walk-in freezer. And so I find it pretty hypocritical that, you know, you're okay taking money from the city to improve your business when you're raking in thousands of dollars every year on this already, and then you criticize us for trying to raise some more money, so, you know, kind of falling on deaf ears, and keep that in mind, as, you know, you're going out to spend your money at a restaurant or gaming, you know, who supports the town and supports what we're trying to do, and who doesn't? Okay, anybody in the crowd? Pete?
No.
Okay. Second row.
Are you all, are you ready?
Uh, you're third row, I'm gonna get to you in just a second, anybody in the second row there? Ian? Okay. Yep, go ahead.
Some of you know me, some of you don't. I, my name is Jesse James, I've been a resident for Ducoy for years, I've been a business here for years. Wade and I did projects, I know Coach, I wish Mike was here. We recently acquired the Blue Bell Packing Plant. It took some time to close, and we are using it, and we are going to continue to use it. And during the beginning of it, the mayor sent Doug Tony to my gate and gave me some tickets that I was renting this until we got it clear. He didn't come and talk to me, he didn't ask us what our intentions was or anything. We do liquidate businesses, and we're gonna continue to liquidate businesses, and we do bring different, whatever. We do have several, oh, we did have several RVs, they cost $763 a piece to get a title. We paid that, we bought 63 of them with the titles. We put our money back in the community. We don't get a check from the state and the city, and we don't take anything from it. We stand on our own, we're a solvent company, we owe no money to no one. So then comes along Jordan and gives, my son is the one that owns the company, and Jordan and Doug Tony's wanting to give us more tickets. Judge Gross threw them all out. Well, Ruth here says, well, you gotta have a business license, we applied for it, and it should be on the agenda tonight, but I guess it's up to, to Ruth here to say if we get a business license or not.
We don't put business license on the agenda.
Okay, well, it should be voted on here tonight, because we had plenty of time to do it, so.
When did you turn it in?
Last week.
Yep. So, we finalized the agenda on Thursday.
It would be something on the agenda anyway, business license.
It's not on the agenda, I signed those.
Okay.
That's up to me to approve, nobody else.
Okay. Well, so we got a business. If, if no one has ever went around Blue Bell Packing Plant, let me tell you, it was five coal mines in the beginning, it was a wonderful business whenever we were all in school. I worked there, best job I ever had, made the most money at that time, I made more than coal miners made. It was a wonderful job, and, and I appreciated everything that they did for you then, okay? And it was kind of a, a great thing, so that whenever we could acquire it. After Ducoy Packaging, it was Ducoy Meat Processing that the Pearls started. So it's always been a business, and when we acquired it, if some of the officers here, they could tell you, you couldn't drive through the property. And when we acquired it, if some of the officers here, they could tell you, you couldn't drive through the property. It was so grown up, so many buildings down. We got a stack of this much of receipts where we went to the landfill. Thousands of dollars that we complete, we cleaned this property up. And due to your thing, he never asked us, he didn't ask us anything, just came and started giving us citations for RVs. So what? They're legal. Okay? So that's, that was your feeling, and that was his feeling. So we go to court. Two weeks ago, about two months ago, I'm sorry. Kaylin says, well, we want to do an inspection, and if you don't, we'll fly a drone over. Well, that's a threat of breaking federal law because we already checked before. You can't fly a drone over. But, you know, if you want to try to get a warrant for that.
Actually, I don't do city courts, so it wasn't me.
No, it wasn't you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You said Kaylin. I did not say that.
Okay. It was your brother. And he was, he is something else. So anyway, we waited on him to fly the drone over. So in the process, we have been doing some of our homework. The former attorney, they get twice the money. You want to save money? This man has seven other communities that never had a problem. I'm not against you making money. He was flawless. And he is a friend of mine. And, well, we'll talk about the flawless here in a minute. And then if you want to save money, let's see where we're getting our return. That's all I ask. I ask, I FO you the billing reports, but I want an itemized statement. And I didn't get it, but I will get it. So we're, we've already contacted the departments to investigate. So we're doing more for you, and we found several other things. So I wanted to annexed out, we wouldn't be here right now. And that would have been the best. So in the meantime, Ms. Hale here has raised Dow Water 25%. Did the board vote on that? Because we couldn't find it in the middle.
Your time's up, Jesse, and I don't raise anything. I don't have a vote.
Did you, did you raise their 25%?
Point of notice, I want to correct the record that we actually had two attorneys before we hired the Campinaola brothers. So you may want to check how much we actually paid, but your time's up.
Okay, if you want, if you want me to stop, but there's way more.
Yeah, now your five minutes is up. I think you got to court date this Wednesday, so if you can figure it out there.
Yeah, we will. Can I ask you one question?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else? Jeff?
Doug?
Okay. With that, I think we're ready to adjourn at 6:35. Motion is second.
So moved.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.